Hold on there. New pledge allegiance, please.
The flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united in its whole liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. We'll do a roll call.
Hi, I have roll call this evening. President Dan. Vice President Everett.
Here.
Treasurer Dayton.
Here.
Secretary Fritz.
Here.
Trustee Thomas, absent. Trustee Zimmerman.
Present.
Trustee Wazior.
Here.
And we have a corner.
Great. Okay. That's the roll call with public comments number one. Anybody out there? You're up.
Hi. My name is Pat Waller. I'm the lead for Paddle and Kish in Ringo. And I wanted to thank you for cooperating with us so that we can clear the river. We were out there this morning going from 23 to Thorn. And so that is permanently cleared, permanently till next winter.
Until some more trees fall down.
Oh, yeah. Um, we hear there's a couple of, couple of tree falls west of Thorn, but we've actually officially cleared the whole thing once. Um, so it's been, it's been good.
Excellent.
Um, and I wanted to congratulate you on, um, I was talking, I'm on part of the Tishawaki River Ecosystem Partnership along with Gabe. And the last Zoom call, he mentioned that you're thinking of re-vaandering the end of the Kish, the, you know, just before County Line Road. And that would be very exciting. Um, so it's a great project. It's so worthwhile.
Well, we appreciate all your work.
Okay. We see herons every time we're on the Kish, eagles half the time. Otter once in a while, lot of muscle collection, um, most of shell collection. Um, and it's just, it's great. So thank you for all you're doing. And we're hoping we're helping the water flow better and it's all good.
Good.
It's a good partnership. Thank you.
Thank you. Persistence pays. Anybody else for public comments?
Matt, send me raised hands.
Okay, thank you. All right, I guess we'll go on to presentations. The Kennedy County Horse Club. Are you ready to be up, Vern?
Ready. We might, we sit or...
You can do whatever you want.
I mean, okay. I'll, I'll just, first of all, I'd like to introduce Charlotte Bearnell. Charlotte's Vice President of the Kennedy County Horse Club. My name is Vern Scotty. I'm the President of the Kennedy County Horse Club. And I had the great opportunity to serve on this board five years. So I see one familiar face, you know, the basketball changelings.
Yes.
Um, I'd just like to say, uh, Rush Creek Horse Trail is similar to the opening in Charles Dickens' 1859 book, A Tale of Two Cities. It opened with, it was the best of times and it was the worst of times. What I mean is that Rush Creek is the number one horse trail for riders, not only in McHenry County, but neighboring Lake County and southern Wisconsin. That's the best of times. When we have significant rains in our area, it usually means Rush Creek will be closed for extended periods of times. That's the worst of times. For example, when it rains Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, usually means the trail will be closed over the weekend. Staff, after we had a meeting, said they would agree to reevaluate trail conditions at Rush Creek on Friday. This situation happened on the weekend of April 27th. We had rained for three straight days. They made me on Friday to say, we're going to leave the trail open for the weekend because the weather looks good. So I appreciate the effort that staff has been in that area. On February 12th, the district area and his folks, um, met with our organization and agreed that if Rush Creek is going to be closed, the district website not only identifies that it's closed, but also indicates to people that usually Brookdale is open. And it's just a neighboring trail to Rush Creek. So we asked that, it just helps the riders, people look at your website all the time to see if it's open or closed. And many times when Brookdale's open and Rush Creek's closed, a lot of people don't go to that next step. So just a little notation that I noticed on the website, I believe we could, um, the district can add a little notation when that happens to just send people that way. Since we can't change Rush Creek, the problem is that the demography there just, it's not good since in rainy situations, how do we make Brookdale as popular as Rush Creek? The alternative is if that's not where we can go on an early season or in the fall usually, what, what can we do to make, um, Brookdale as popular as Rush Creek? One, we need to still increase the length of the trail. It's, it's a short ride. Uh, if you're not familiar, um, when we go riding as horse owners, it's not like taking your bike or taking your roller blade or whatever other sport you are into. It means you have to get your horses ready to go. You have to get your trailer ready to go. You have to drive there, take your horses out, groom them, saddle them, take the ride, come back and reverse that whole process when you get home. So a two-hour ride for a horse trail ends up being almost a seven-hour day from start to finish, getting everything ready and going there. So most horse people, when they go somewhere, they would like to at least have two, two and a half, three-hour ride, this, this kind of idea.
How, uh, how many miles is it to go ride? I mean, I'm sure pace is different, but...
Right.
I have no idea, so I'm just curious what, um, what it may look like.
To ride Rush Creek at a reasonable, I mean, you could ride Rush Creek in hour and 15 minutes if you're, if you ride. And I'm not talking pony express. I'm just talking a, a nice gate or a trot or something like that. But most horse people, this is a leisure thing for them. So two hours, two hours, 15 minutes, one and a half hours at Rush Creek.
Perfect.
Eight miles.
Yeah.
How much?
Eight miles. We would have to have like at least eight miles.
Okay, that's, okay.
Yeah. Brookdale is a much shorter trail. So one of the things that we talked about when it first opened, there was no sense of free go there because it was less than, you know, hour, hour and 15. And when we added the additional loop on the other side of the Cut Road, that helped, you know, increase the time of, of riding. People would more hope, you know, towards going there, uh, to go through all the preparation you do to get there and then have the ride and then go back home. To that, okay, yeah, okay. Um, so increased trail length, increased diversity of trail by shifting between grass and woods and trails. That's what is, is so great about Rush Creek. You ride in an open prairie, you ride in the woods, you cross actually through parts of the creek and you get a creek crossing. So people love that. We often said, and we loved it though, um, at, uh, not Brookdale, um, facial park. Um, we'd like to cross the creek there, but that's, we're not going to have that so much. Um, because we actually, when you ride in, um, Boone County, you can cross the little Tishawaki River, you go across the river, one side of the trail, the other. Multiple shifts and grade, um, Rush Creek doesn't have, it's got a lot of diversity in terms of where you ride and how you ride. Brookdale pretty much is a pretty flat, uh, around farmer's field. Add additional loops as proposed by staff at our February meeting. When we met with the staff on February 12th, um, we were talking about their, that side of, uh, Rush, of Brookdale. Uh, and we found out it was a fire break basically, and you cross the creek. You actually have to go through the creek again to the other. And it rode out and it was on the property. So they, they said that, that's possible, a good possibility to add additional trail for, uh, Brookdale. Proposed, and they came up with this, and it's actually a half a mile. When I talked to the ranger, he said that, I mean, I, their loop would increase the trail. And that would get, uh, Brookdale into five-mile range. So a little over five, just under, you know, just over five. Um, and so we also felt that since that was a fire break, it's not like we have to reinvent, um, looking at the, at the facilities, uh, doing this a long-term study. It's something that the district currently cuts down all the vegetation. And we offered that if they wanted, we would be happy to go on a volunteer weekend and clean the whole, that whole section of trail up, uh, with all of the, uh, trees that may have been roughly cut and laying the trail and so forth. Since the first, and I don't know if you're familiar, but Brookdale was established in a joint partnership with the horse community, not only in McHenry County, but, uh, Lake County also pitched them some of the money and debt. And we worked with the McHenry County Conservation Foundation. Uh, and the horse community raised $40,000, which gave the district the opportunity to apply for a federal regional trail program, uh, if, if our, uh, federal regional trail, if our, uh, TP, um, which gave the district, by us raising 40,000, the district, you not only got our 40,000, but the federal government gave them $160,000. So that $200,000 was applied to not only the trail length, but also create the horse trailer parking lot. And it's, and it's a state-of-the-art, in my opinion, horse trailer parking lot, other than when kid wheelies over the weekend. And we were happy to be there on a ride this past weekend and we saw a route there doing wheelies the night before, I guess. I also just wanted to close and say that, um, we tell the staff constantly, I ride in Boone County, Winnebago County, Lake County, DuPage County, uh, Coe County, and over across the line in Wisconsin. We have the best horse trails, um, in all the areas we go through. So kudos to staff. Uh, they're always in great condition, uh, they're well-maintained. And, um, if an issue comes up and you're happening over ranger, you can call, let them know what's going on and they're always very responsive. So what we're asking for is what can we do exactly to make, uh, Brookdale the preferred trail of choice? And it's never going to replace Rush Creek. There's no doubt about that, just because it's not Rush Creek. But what can we do to enhance people to go there and then days when we can't ride in Rush Creek, can we try to come up with something where Brookdale is the alternative and we have happy citizens all the way around? Any questions?
Do you have any questions?
Mm-hmm.
I, I guess, yeah, the next step is we'll talk, get over with staff and, uh, be able to get back here and see if we can come up with any suggestions. Do, do you have suggestions on what to do with it? Have you provided those? Well, he just more or less said try to do the fire, the fire break, fire break. Fire break. Anything else?
Um,
I mean, just looking for thing, other things, uh...
You know, we, we, we have stayed within the footprint that's out there and, you know, 75% of the trail is riding around the farm fields out there. And it's pretty flat and open. Uh, and there's a benefit to that and buggy weather is a place to be, you know, you don't want to go in the woods. But we have a small section where you go through the woods and then there's another farm field, there was a farm field back there. We ride around that now. Um, there's, like I said, if you go back into the Paulson roadside, there's a lot of, um, great difference. There's a, uh, you cross the creek, a, a, a nice water crossing and the elevations are different and you're in park woods. So to me, that's, that works well and staff had said that was something that they thought was something that's doable. So I, I'll bring up the other one is you, I know you, I think I understood correctly, this district owns the Boy Scout camp now. It went through the foundation and it's now the district's domain. They had a horse trail at the Boy Scout camp. I've gone there once and looked at it. Um, the issue is you own the parcel of property right at 14 and then you don't own anything till the Boy Scout camp. What Lake County has done, when I ride in Lake County, a lot of times with the horse trails in Lake County, where they don't have adjacent property from one side of the trail or one trail to another trail, they've worked with the Lake County Department of Transportation, who's given them the right to do the right of way. In fact, the, the Department of Transportation takes care of that right of way. And when you ride there, you can go from one trail to another trail on the right of way you can go in. So that would be an option. And I know that's a long-term process, but it's something that I think, you know, if the Boy Scout choose to ride there, um, that would, that would really be great. Ed and I had talked, I'm going to speak for you, Ed. Um, you know, the ideal, the ideal is you have, Brookdale will be here, you have Rush Creek over there. We, you own everything, but I think the last time I talked, parcels of land between them, we said we need them to go out there and talk to the owners of those lands if we could get them to let us use the back side of their property. It'd be a great, have, you know, park here, ride to Rush Creek, park to Rush Creek, ride here, come back. I mean, most riding trails in other counties are like that. They put all their money into one big location where you can finger out and ride for, um, uh, literally four or five hours. You know, you could go six, seven hours if you wanted, because they have all their trails interchanged and they can put them in one area of, of the county. So, uh, but that's not what we did here. We got them spread out. But this is a good footprint if we're going to do something going forward, that would be a recommendation.
Good. Good.
We have the, the one trail that, um, that we cut, you know, for the fire. And it does go out and it just kind of ends, okay? And we can turn around and come back, which, I mean, Sue was a good rider because it made us more. We, the horseback riders like loops. That way you get between this loop and you can go back over there and do this loop and then they'll come back around and you'll pick up here and, and it, it just breaks them apart, you know? So if you could put more loops in, that's great. And the most beautiful place over here in Brookdale is to go through those pines. When you go down through those pines, everybody's just like, isn't it beautiful here? Isn't it beautiful? So if like more trail could be cut, could get more woods and just, you know, make loops and make more trails through woods and, and prairies and just altering up hills.
Sure. Lake, Lake County's a good example of, uh, where they connected the trails and, and then did great loops. So they have a, a small parcel of land, but they put a bunch of loops in it and you, you don't realize you're in the same parcel, you just move at the loops. And, and, and I'll give credit again, we've added several loops at Brookdale for more at first time. We had just one big circle. And then we, the staff, even just by request, broke it up a bit and put a couple of loops in. It makes it, it makes a, a nice, nice ride.
Also, another place that's wonderful, Burnage, if you've ever been to Burnage, is Paul Wolf Run in Kane County, Elgin area. That's a fabulous place and they have a lot of hills, they have, you know, again, loops and we're, we're allowed to even go on the walk, on the bicycle areas, you know, and stuff. We have different things. We have fields, we have forests, we have the bike path, we have all that we can want. And, uh, so...
And we're not opposed to that. I know that in the old days, earlier, it was like, this is the horse trail and only horses. And that was, that was back then, this is now. We share trails, uh, Brookdale's a good example of it.
Lakewood?
Lakewood, yeah.
Yeah.
We, uh, we're not, we're not, we want to share, we want to share a trail wherever we go, so.
Good. All right. Well, thank you.
Well, thank you.
Thank you. We'll be in touch.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
I saw a sign at the, uh, Lake County, um, for fast riders, they have fast horses. For slow riders, they have slow horses. For those who've never ridden, they have horses that have never been ridden.
Actually, Lake County, basically literally a county, and you could ride from the Wisconsin border right up to the county on their trail system. The problem is you have to turn around and get back to your trail. So I don't know many people who did that, but it's, uh, but that's how they connect all their trails in Lake County. They do, for how we have our bike trails. Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Staff will give us their recommendations. All right, we'll move on to 5.2. The presentation on enhancing public access to the Fox River Conservation Area.
The presentation by John and Amy.
And you'll have, you guys will have...
Rested. I know, but you're... Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Amy will do the, the, the bulk of the presentation. Um, she knows the project a lot better than me, but I do want to introduce it. Give you a little backdrop. Uh, Fox River Conservation Area has been owned, um, between, I think we bought the first parcel in 97 or 98. So the second parcel, the third parcel, or whatever it was, was somewhere around 2003 or '04 in that range. So we've owned it, you know, owned it for pretty much about 20 years. Uh, it was initially, uh, we leased a section of it out to, uh, to, I believe it was the YMCA of McHenry County for several years. Um, after they were done with it, then it came back to us and, and I think that was about 2010. And that's when we implemented a master plan on the site. Um, it is, uh, a, a very interesting site. It's got, and Amy will talk a little bit about, um, the history there. Um, it's got a tremendous amount of that. But when you, when you look at, um, looking at trying to implement a large-scale project like this one is, you have to find, you have to match a, a funding source to a project. So this master plan was done sometime in about 2015 and some different iterations of it there, but that's about when it was done and approved by the board. And we've kind of sitting there waiting for an opportunity like this of large, it's a, it's a very large development because it's a very long road to get back in there and get down to the water. Um, so it's a...
How many acres is it?
The, the combination of two, let's see, 116 and 137? So it's around 280 acres.
Gotcha.
So, um, so, so when this opportunity came to the Congresswoman's office, uh, between the combination of having Elizabeth, having, knowing her, um, having her having some interest in McHenry County and wanting to do something, and us having this project sitting there that we've been, or some kind of a large funding source, it was a, it was a great marriage. Uh, so we jumped on it and, uh, and submitted an application. So with that said, I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Amy and let her talk a little bit about the project, um, uh, itself.
Well, thank you. And I am, am just super excited to be here. Like John said, this is sort of the stars aligned. Um, and you, you, you don't get that opportunity very often. So I'm going to, um, Elizabeth, ask you to flip through. So what, what the PowerPoint is the pitch deck that we put together, um, you know, to go along with the grant and to go to the Congresswoman. And so, um, it's, it's more of that, um, feel-good and just why this is so, um, unique. Um, and so the purpose obviously of this site and of what the district has always, um, intended to envision of it, um, is, is written there. That's in our master plan. It's what we call our, our major, um, you know, objective. Um, everything sort of gets to go back to that. Any kind of question, any kind of request, you know, we, we, we sort of use this as, as the backbone of, does it, does it align with this? Um, again, we highlighted, um, for this project, it, it's hard to choose, um, some of the highlights, but we, we chose, um, the history of, um, the fresh air camp. So of that southern portion, um, there was about 20 acres that was original, um, to the fresh air camp. Um, and that's huge. And it was, it ties it to the larger picture of Chicago. It, it ties it to helping, um, you know, the underprivileged, um, the children, the sick, um, the health. It recognized, again, early 1800s, um, how valuable, um, fresh air and outdoor, um, space was. So we highlighted that. Um, again, I think we talked about it from a historic standpoint. It was listed, um, on the, um, 10 most endangered historic places, um, which again, just talked about how, um, special it is. Um, another, um, highlight of this site that makes it one of the stars is that we have this James Jensen Plan. And Jensen was a landscape architect, um, very similar to like a, um, architect of Frank Lloyd Wright, you know, that kind of caliber, um, very, um, uh, oriented towards conservation, um, and, um, at Illinois. So again, to have just stumbled on this when we were looking at the history, this, um, it just adds another layer of a really cool, interesting history. Um, I know people have asked, we have, um, we've exhausted everything we know to do to search, to look for, um, both onsite and through documentation of whether or not this site was ever, um, actually implemented and we don't. Um, but it's still a really neat element. And again, our master plan identified we could actually be recreate, well, not create, creating for the first time. We could take these elements, um, and, and build them into our master plan of how public space is used for this site. So we intend to do that. Um, the other unique, obviously, um, for the district and for the county is, um, it's adjacent to the Fox River and it has access. And so we want to get people to that unique, um, environment that we don't have the opportunity to do in any other place. So, um, again, recognized on the National Park Service, that's the fabulous Fox Water Trail. Um, again, it is, uh, highly, highly, um, restoration-rich, research-rich. Talks about all of the endangered species and, um, the ravines and, um, again, just the, uh, opportunities in, in that realm. Um, and obviously the drinking water, um, and just rest of it, all, it's all spring fed through there. So again, lots of different opportunities to, um, enhance the site with the water. Um, so for this particular ask of funding, it's not entirely everything on the master plan. Again, as John alluded to, it's just, it's a large site. It had a lot of, um, still, we've done demo. Um, we've taken down all of the buildings, um, but the remaining three that we, um, you know, that we intended to do something with. Um, the distance is, is over 225,000 linear feet from, you know, Cary Elgonquin Road down to, um, the water's edge. So again, just, just that in itself. Um, there is an existing single-lane, um, road, but it's, it would need improvement. It doesn't meet the, the standards that we would need it to be. So, um, the first, um, category is, that we would want to take care of is the removal and renovation. So again, there is one building that is too far gone. Um, this grant would, um, fund demo, which we don't get to say that very often. So, um, the other would be then we have the building down by the water, the closest to that we call the Board of Trade. And so that is where we would focus this phase. Again, what is going to attract people there and give them access to, um, experience, um, the Fox River? So that's the, those are the main things in, in that sort of bucket. Um, the place making and character again is very easy to do since this place has all of that already, but it's how do we highlight that? So it, all of the layers of history, um, all of the, um, the restoration, all of the plants, um, creating places for those to be educated, whether that's self, um, or whether it's an education program. So just creating places that, um, again, highlight all of those, um, special qualities of the site. And then, um, the connections, um, we obviously will need a dedicated road for it. Um, and there's a lot of, um, trails, regional trail connections. We had had a great conversations with Cary. Um, they have a park right there on Lawson. So again, always the intent was to, um, you know, how, how do we pull this together? Is it walkable to, um, you know, the, to Elgonquin, things like that? How's it work within the community to bring people there? So again, specific to this ask, this funding ask, um, that's just the breakdown of our estimate. And, and, um, as John said, we have been working on this site for a long time, but it's always been little pieces here, little pieces there. So these cost estimates actually were fairly recent. They were from 2019, um, because we were, again, um, this wasn't the first time that we've asked for funding. So, um, obviously those are estimate. Um, but again, breaking down is the removal and restoration. There are, um, a lot of, uh, dollars next to utilities because again, that length, there's nothing there. Um, and so we'll have to bring in those modern, um, you, you know, utilities for, for the building. The building renovation, um, uh, again, is making that, um, Board of Trade building, for public assembly, rental, um, adding, right now it's, it's, I don't know if everybody's been in it, but it's, it's just one big room. So, um, again, from, from a historic standpoint, it's the location of it, the materials aren't. So we can, the footprint is, um, we can add the modern, um, you know, S and D rooms that we need and that sort of thing. Um, site infrastructure obviously is our biggest, that's parking lots, that's roads, that's, um, just all of those, um, standards that we would... just all of those, um, standards that we would need to meet making a two-way. Um, we would love to have it have a bike lane. Um, so, you know, again, trying to, um, make those connections for everybody. And then obviously professional services. We here on, uh, staff are architects or civil engineers, so we would have to assemble a team to, um, help us manage the project.
Okay. Make it slow.
Also, okay. Do you want, I could go right. Um, yeah.
So what the building would look like in its day?
Um, no, that is, that picture in the background is, um, a, a, a concept of what we would do with it. And so we do have those plans. Um, again, for this pitch, for this pitch deck, you know, we weren't giving them all of the detail. We were just still giving, um, you know, some pretty pictures, but I am happy to share those. Um, that is the conclusion then. It's, it's just how amazing of an opportunity, uh, this site um, gives the district, gives the community, um, and I can't say enough about, about how, uh, just great this would, would be. Um, and, um, again, when we did this, um, the multiple master plans, you know, all of the lives of the people that have, um, had time out here, um, just came out of the woodwork. And I think again, um, they will when, you know, this does take off and, and get support in all sorts of different ways, whether they were, you know, family members or whether their camp, you know, they, the YMCA, um, a-again, the, the just, uh, history here is, is great. And that's really, um, our presentation at this point, like at this level, um.
Oh, have you had contact with the, uh, Congresswoman?
Yes.
And, um,
How was it like you share?
Oh, I was gonna say, well, I just wanna, first of all, I wanna congratulate in just the awesome work that, uh, this was a project and to be able to turn this, we knew the congressional from last year's experience that these things come out and you have a limited time and, and John learned kind of the project process to put this through. And, um, and therefore we were able to get it there. So I know
This week was all like eleven dollars, correct?
Well, we, we, we forced
Um, that's for me, yeah. Yeah, for in, in less than, less than eleven hours.
It had to be pretty quick, yeah. Well, we had been thinking about it for a while. Um, we had some of the legwork done a few, few weeks ago. Um, we did hear from, uh, the Congresswoman's office that they did forward this as one of their fifteen projects to be considered. Now that has to go through a lot of processes yet. It has to go through the federal budget process. It has to go through whatever committee trend, the, the committee that it has to go to. It's gotta get that, uh, blessing. Then it has to get funded. Uh, and so, you know, it's, it's, it, we're in a good spot, but we have a long way to go with this.
So it's not a sure thing.
It's not a sure thing in the amounts.
That is absolutely correct.
So I, I guess what, all right, so three point six minutes, you know, you know, a year goes by, another year goes by. Or is it gonna take that long?
No, 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 no.
Not nobody else will permit.
The, the, the sequence of, as we've been told is that by they, they hope to know in, in January, whether it's been included in the budget, whether the committees have included it in the budget requests. And then that gets approved like in April or May, a year from now, Pat. So like one year from now, if it gets approved, they, they kind of had a sliding scale there, maybe June. But if it gets approved, then the money would be available, uh, in October. So if you're thinking about a sequence of this, it would be, you know, we really don't do anything except for some of the background work where we might start looking at assembling a team and whatnot. If we get a nod at, at Christmas time or in January, that this is going through the, you know, we might start prepping for it. You know, we're not gonna spend a lot of dollars, but we might start assembling the teams for it. Uh, but not really kicking this thing off until we know that we, we are funded.
And, and with this, and in many of the projects that the request is three point six, it could be less than that when it comes back because they may end up taking some off of various projects.
They might, they, the, the, the funding source.
I got it.
Cause I'm gonna say, I mean, you know, few, three point six sounds like a lot of money, but start doing stuff.
Not, you will not cover, every, it's not gonna cover. That's why it's only, um, you know, beginning phase. It's phase one. Focus on getting them access to the river and we'll have to see how far it takes us. But you're right, it, it, it won't go as far as you think.
Is it possible or okay to walk down to the river?
So if you're currently, we would make an arrangement for you to go out there and we'd be happy to do so. And I don't know, has we been to where some of you have been out?
I bet, I bet there for that.
But I have been, I have been out to the river.
We walked all over.
Yeah, it's, it's okay. Just go out there earlier this week. So we do need to
They had this
Get you a little clearing, but, um, before you go down there.
And then we're also, we'll be working with the Congresswoman for a site visit to come out and take a look at the property. So at that opportunity, that'll be a good meet and greet for the board as well on that. And I also want to acknowledge the county, um, for their efforts because there was another project that, well, the county had a couple of projects that made the top fifteen and the social worker project also hit that. And together, you know, they wrote letters of support, vice versa, back and forth. And so both projects did move forward in the process, so.
And can I mention, just because we didn't, but, um, the county was a partner in purchase of this portion of, um, Fox Flap. And so, um, again, we couldn't have, you know, it is, it's, it's been an ongoing partnership, um, to have this opportunity.
So what we're asking tonight is, um, to, um, ratify the application. I mean, we basically have submitted it. Uh, of course, if the board didn't want to do that, we would contact the Congresswoman's office and we would say, no, we don't want to do that. Uh, my recommendation is we let it, we let it roll, see where it goes. Um, and, uh, the, the one thing and Amy hit on this, I hit on this, I want to say it one more time and then it's we have to have the right funding source because it is such a long ways. You can't, I, I, I hope they don't come back and say, we'll give you a million because I, I'm not sure what we can do with that. I mean, we'll, we'll find something to do with it, but you saw one of the numbers, just the road alone is one point six to get, to get down there. So, you know, maybe they'll come back and do that and we can piecemeal it around a little bit, but I hope that doesn't happen. Um, I'm, I'm very hopeful. They like the project. This, this project and the funding source matched up close, just dovetail, you know, like the hand and glove. So it's like, perfect, let's go.
And this will be an opportunity as well. And speaking with the foundation, the timeframe on this is absolutely perfect because they're looking for some things that they can get a longer runway to help the exciting stuff that goes above and beyond that they can raise private funds to again, put on top of this. And, and so with that, I think the news, um, both can work. And it's just a win-win-win all the way around. And it's a historic piece of property. We've been talking about historic preservation as well. And, uh, for those that have been out there, understand, um, you know, the peril of, of what this is at, so this.
Plus it's in a good, good position and a quality for population.
Correct.
That's just such a neat piece.
Yeah.
Oh, man, it's a little kid.
Oh, oh, really?
Yeah, my grandmother, uh, was a cook for them.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. She's, she can, she's got that picture.
Yeah, I thought I do, I thought I do. I thought I do. That is just such a neat piece.
Yeah.
First, yeah. And the agritourism opportunity, if you pull that off, that would be awesome. And almost as good as the Buffalo Trail, damn.
We're still working.
Buffalo Trail.
Are there really buffalo out there?
Yeah, I, I don't know. I, I, I personally couldn't get back there and see.
Well, they're not that big.
Any other questions? I, I think we can have a consensus. They won't be long.
Absolutely.
Yeah, obviously.
Thank you.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you to Congressman Shikowski for her work as well. So we'll send her sign this.
Okay, we'll go to five point three with the Silver Creek Habitat Restoration and flooding mitigation project.
This is another, uh, community project funding grant program. This one's from the tenth district. And, uh, Elizabeth called at the eleven and a half hour.
Yes, well, that was a god.
But we got it done. Uh, and this is, uh, we'll go to the next slide. So this, uh, project location will be in Greenwood Township. As the map unfolds, you'll realize we've talked repeatedly about this particular site. It's in our, uh, Queen and Prairie Holdings. Uh, part of it is, uh, belongs to the Bystricky Prairie Nature Preserve, the state designated area. And it's situated primarily north and west of Silver Creek, which is sometimes called Newman Creek, depending on which map you look at. And the project involves, uh, approximately thirty-three acres of restored grasslands, wetlands, and a lot of brushy areas. Okay. So this is a location map. Um, Pat and Chris, you may recognize this parcel.
I do.
Um, this is the one we spoke with the Farm Bureau on about, uh, beaver issues that, um, we have been dealing with for a number of years there. So we've framed this particular, uh, I have to compliment the natural resource staff who've been trying to figure out a solution to some of the problems we have in this area, uh, with Silver Creek and with the beaver. And they came up with the idea that we could vary a project that would enhance the, uh, natural qualities of Bystricky Prairie. And at the same time, get rid of a lot of the brush that's growing up along the creek. And then when this opportunity came and Elizabeth, uh, called, we had that idea already in queue. Although it's moved much faster than a lot of the grants we put together. I think we came up with it a couple of months ago and now it's moving into the possible funding stage. So this gives you the location. Okay. Uh, and the area that we're gonna be working on is composed primarily of really bad wetland soils that flood a lot. They're subject to periodic flooding, um, along Silver and Slute Creek, which is kind of a combined system there. And you see the, uh, we laid out the two particular areas that we're gonna be working on. One is right up against the creek. Um, the other one is a little bit further, uh, north and west from it. Now, these are general acreages. We won't know the full acreages till we get into the detailed planning stage, but it'll be somewhere between thirty-three and forty acres, depending on which way we go. Right? Um, so a little bit about these projects that I discovered, uh, researching it that evening. Um, like all of the congressional, um, community projects, we have to compete with other projects in the tenth district. Um, but, or you have to coordinate it through an existing federal program or have a federal agency for conservation-related projects. Like this, we'll be working with NRCS and we'll be utilizing the funding through one of their existing farm bill programs. So one of the things we had to do is call NRCS and, uh, ask them if this concept would fit into one of their existing programs, which was an, an interesting endeavor. I started at the state level, moved to the area level, then to the local level, and no one had any idea what community assisted funding was. So we sent them the description. They looked it up. They figured out what it was. And I said, it would fit under a couple of the existing programs that have either from our Butterfly Act Tatter through the EQUIP program. We're not sure which one we would go with. We wanted to make sure we had the funding lined up first. Um, so they, they have told us it, it could fit into one of their programs. So the components are pretty straightforward. You see them all the time. Um, we'll be removing brush during winter when the frozen ground will support the equipment. We'll clean up the brush that's growing on the banks of Silver Creek. Um, and it'll be a case-by-case removal for what's down materials in the creek. And that will be based on regulations, on the permitting that we get, what it allows us to take out, leave in. And also the in-stream habitat needs, but we will probably be able to clean up some of the blockages that are in there that, um, neighbors have been concerned about. Um, we'll follow up with herbicide control of the cut stumps so that we don't have the same problem again. Seed the area down, especially along Silver Creek, where there's a lot of erosion. Uh, and we'll follow up with regular prescription burning for keep, to keep the brush from coming back. So this is the last slide and these are really the project goals. Um, Silver Creek, Silver Creek has some pretty exposed banks in that area. Pat, you've probably seen some of them when you were out there. And this will allow us to get some, uh, get the shading off, to get some vegetation established on them. That in turn is gonna reduce the silk flow into Silver Creek, which is part of the problem it has right now. Um, one of our support letters came from the village of Wander Lake because they wind up with all that silt in Wander Lake, so they were pretty happy about it. I'll reestablish more normal stream flow to Silver Creek during high water events. Um, I will not say it's gonna prevent flooding. It just, it's gonna allow that water to move at a, a more normal rate. Um, we'll reestablish native vegetation, uh, on that area. And it also includes, um, and one reason I think this, this went as far as it did with the, um, congressional offices, uh, we have a couple of endangered federal and state species in that same area. So that gave it a boost, I think. Um, we'll get rid of a bunch of trees and we'll create a fuel matrix that allows us to run. Right? So, there we are.
What were the, uh, endangered species?
Um, the rusty patch bumblebee is one.
Okay.
Um, you know, and God bless the bees.
Yeah.
Three hundred thousand dollars. Um, and the other species is a federally endangered orchid, or federally threatened orchid, which occurs in that general area.
I wanted those to handle.
So, um,
Correct me if I'm wrong, uh, the Silver Creek, is that where the woodstock north plant discharges their wastewater?
Yeah. So it, it takes an enormous amount of water, but it normally was never designed to handle.
Seven to ten, nine.
Yeah. And I think as time goes on, you're gonna see those flows increase. So this is really helpful for down the line. Do you mind reporting where we were?
Right. So, uh, again, on this, uh, and again, appreciate a big thank you to Ed and, and Dave and John, cause they had this project in queue and ready to go. And then John, after going through and submitting the original one from Congressman Shikowski's office, because they want to lead us through, because we were at the eleventh hour and a million too, you were helping us get into the portal to make sure that we could get things in and submitted. And then of course, all of our partners that jump right up to send letters of support, which has been awesome on both projects. Um, this project was one of fifty projects that Congressman Schneider had, um, it made it in the top fifteen. Um, that was advanced forward. Uh, Congressman Schneider had a town hall meeting last evening and he boasted he did. This was one of the projects that he highlighted, um, with another, uh, about, uh, his interest in the question. So again, very positive. And then we are working on another event with Congressman for a bike with, uh, Brad, uh, in August here along the ferry trail. And we've been a big support for the habitat and wildlife refuge. And so building these relationships, um, is vitally important. Um, in heading projects and being able to have capacity to have things ready to roll when opportunities. So, um, again, two great projects. Nothing that's new, something that we need to take care of and, and, uh, being prepared to go makes a difference.
Excellent. Well, thank you for jumping on that like that.
Yeah, thank you.
On the eleventh and a half hour.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right. Lots of exciting projects for you guys tonight.
Yeah.
So I have another exciting one. Uh, through our current strategic plan, I think it's tech to one point five, but we were tasked to take a look at, uh, some opportunities to for stream bank, you see the stream and wetland mitigation bank projects. And today, uh, we're bringing it forward. This proposal is a conceptual project. This RFP is for, uh, engineering services in order for us to put together perspectives for a potential litigation bank. So with that, we'll be gone. The wetland component of this project, which will primarily be the wetland mitigation part is, uh, on this two hundred acre farm parcel. So what requires to remove this hundred acre farm parcel from, uh, the rental program. The current renter has complained about, uh, wet ground and complained about growing crops specifically on the southern portion. So this is kind of in our list, on our list of, uh, site to restore because of those issues with growing crops. And it's, it's about the southern half on, on that, that graph there, but you can see the, the parcel is not the one that goes north-south, but one, one that's more east-west. That's the parcel that we're talking about. Excellent. And then the overall conceptual area that we're taking a look at is around five hundred acres. You can see on the north there, that was the farm parcel that we highlighted in, uh, the previous slide. And then also which can, uh, consist of the flood plain associated with fishbocce rivers. That's the southern half. You can see the orange line there. The orange line represents the ditch. So that area, the kitch, was ditched. It's approximately seven thousand four hundred feet of ditch. And through this concept, we would be, uh, abandoning that ditch and placing the stream back into its former meanders. That's the blue part that you're gonna see.
That's, are they, how like a ditch?
A ditch is agricultural ditch. So in order to lower the water tables, uh, tiles and ditches were constructed in order to have productive agri ground.
Okay.
And even prior, uh, wet ground. So in this case, historically, the stream was in that blue those meanders. And then it was ditched in order to exfoliate the water flow and lower the water. So by abandoning that ditch, our, our goal would be to put the water course back into those old meanders. And that would result in approximately, uh, thirteen thousand five hundred linear feet of restored stream. One aspect of this project, and that's why we need to One aspect of this project, and that's why we need engineering, is this could require a letter of macrovision, and that's to. Adjust the flood plain, that's federal through through PMO, may have to adjust the flood plain. And then we also need to evaluate to make sure that we aren't backing up water on neighboring properties. The neighboring properties are just off of. The uh, just outside the yellow area upstream, we do think we have enough space, but that is something that's going to have to be engineered to make sure that we aren't impacting neighbors. But a big thing here is the wetlands on the north, and the stream component would be on the southern half of of this. Conceptually, the evaluation area next slide. This is the wetland mitigation bonus, this is based on a farm well determination that I completed in order to come up with some figures. And based on my evaluation, we have around twenty point six nine acres of barn wetland that came out that has hydrology. So what that means is that currently is wetland, even though it is farm. And through the mitigation banking criteria, you can only get up to fifty percent credit for those areas that are currently farmed well. The forty-seven point five six would be the maximum of reestablishment, and that is area that's hydro soil. And is not farmed well. So there, by restoring those areas, you can have a hundred percent credit. And then the blue section is enhancement, and there's a lot of complicated ratios, but it has to. Uh, be approved by the Army Corps on what those figures are, but there can only be a certain percentage of the overall target that can be enhanced credit. So based on my calculations, again, those have to be approved by the Army Corps. It's approximately seventy acres of wetland credit that is available in this stream. Excuse me, in this project, and then around eleven thousand uh eight, excuse me, linear feet of stream. So based on our current figures that the board has approved, associated with the school springs thing, that would come out to around sixty million. Revenue over the course of the project. Uh, in the school springs bank, we waited to. Issue credits, uh technically, once you have an agreement with. Uh, the Army Corps and the interagency review team to move forward on a project, you can sell credits. School Springs, we didn't, we wanted to construct it first. In this case, due to the cost that this likely will be, we'd probably. Go forward and try and sell some of those credits as soon as we have uh established agreement, so that we can we can fund this project. And this was also, this project was also approved conceptually for DOT. We presented to the county. And DOT needs credits, specifically wetland credits, and and they kind of. Move this along, saying, hey, we will, we will purchase these credits once they're available.
That's good to know.
Next slide. And then this is just the proposed schedule for the RFP, uh, if the board approves it, we'll put out their notice. On Wednesday, we have a non-mandatory site visit for those interested, and we'll open the site on the twenty-ninth of May. We'll have an opportunity to communicate back with the vendors if they have specific questions associated with the RFP. And then what we'd like to do is have this come back to the board at the July meeting, so hopefully we have a recommendation for you. Uh, again, that deadline, uh, the board can see it is July third, hopefully that'll give us enough time to get back to you July. So with that, do you have any questions?
I have one question. Um, so approximately, what's the cost that could burn off?
Yes, that's a really good question, and again, these are Gabe's paper napkin figures. Uh, I'm going to give you a big range, and this is because I don't know what the requirements are going to be for us to abandon that ditch. I don't know how much rock we're going to need, but based on my calculation, it should be on the low end, seven fifty, on the high end, one point two five, over the course of the entire project. And that is all of the follow-up.
Okay.
So all of all of the man.
So then the farm, the land to the north? That, all that's going, uh, that was around that yellow line, it's all going to be, some of that was farmed, right?
Yes, the all, all, we go back, go back to the second, right here. Sorry, here's the the crop.
Like, like field one, or number one, and that was all, that's field to talk.
Yes.
So how many acres is that that's?
Farm, two hundred, around two, I think it's two oh, two oh three point one five.
Yeah, we lose the rent, so I mean, it's probably going to hit.
How many acres?
That they were complaining about.
Um, probably close to halves.
Close to half, around a hundred acres.
So really a half to. But I mean, they're not going to farm any of it now.
No, okay.
And then would that cutout, is that's the hog farm there?
Yes.
Yeah, cronce.
Your whatever.
Yes. I know, they gave her the credit for us.
So the current, our current pricing, based on the way the market's going, we may want to reevaluate those by the time we actually do this project. But the current pricing is a hundred and twenty-four thousand eight hundred, I believe. For the wetland and seven eighty for the street.
You gotta have a buyer, that's true.
Did the county want to buy?
Yes, and we already have inquiries, because our 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 school springs bank is sold out. We're continually getting inquiries on a lot of credits. We've we've asked for uh an approval, and that's pending right now. To to release more credits on that one, actually Blair is waiting for them.
I'm sorry, you said the sixteen million was including this and the?
No, just this.
Just this, yeah.
And that's, so so the first phase, the first twenty percent release, once you have an approved project. And then the next twenty-five percent is once you have uh established hydrology. And then the next percentage has to be negotiated through the proposal, but that's based on vegetation performance. And then the final percentage is is based on whole performance, so vegetation, hydrology are anything that was set for, got it, okay, thank you.
I understand, so you gotta, so like you're saying, hydrology and vegetation, they gotta come and look and make sure that these plants that are. Go and.
Uh, drought soils are. It's a major monitoring effort for us. I think, I think Elizabeth passed on the report at one point, too. It's around a hundred and twenty-page annual report. It's a lot of effort.
Good. All right, we'll move on to new business. We'll review the regular meeting agenda for the board meeting on Tuesday. Was there any? Issues or corrections on that agenda?
There were no um corrections, everything is straightforward. Dispatch from last month that moved over those final fees, if there's any questions that anybody had. That you want to have answered this evening, and the items we're happy. We have an account transfer, so we want to dispatch, you want to talk a little bit about the dispatch? Cause Ryan did an excellent job, he went back and negotiated a, make sure it was.
Yes, so we saw a large increase in that this year when it first came in, but I'm not sitting down with the governor sheriff. And the chief over at the county, we did uh, did a little weigh-in, quite a bit, so we got it, we had it down as far as we could. Um, but it's, it's the cost of doing business, remarkable, but I term it, there's three regional. Dispatch centers in the county, we have to use all of them. Um, so I think that that's. We've been partnering with the county for years, since we started, so. It's a great relationship we have, they provide an excellent service for us, twenty-four hour, um, five-on-one service, so. I guess, like I said, it's to our best interest to continue that relationship.
Good.
Then, um, the Crystal Lake in a, in a double amount agreement, value worked on that one, is there anything highlights on that?
It's, it's pretty simple, uh, sidewalk. With Main Street and the common shopping center has been across our Prairie Trail. Um, part of our trail needs to be reconstructed, and Crystal Lake's going to pay for the reconstruction.
Is that north or south of uh?
It's fourteen. Say fourteen, that's north. Just north. Uh, and uh, so they're going to pay for the project and reconstruction. And then afterwards, they're going to maintain what's the Portland cement sidewalk, and we're going to maintain the asphalt trail, just like.
Good.
Pretty straightforward. It's a twenty-year agreement, we're used twenty-year terms.
Do you have any other questions now?
And the other one that we're going to have a presentation on is the farm management policy and administrative procedures. So we want to go through that in detail, but that is also on the consent agenda. Glad it all is good tonight, and we're happy to bring that forward.
So we want to do six point two of the first reading of the uh farm management policy.
Correct, please. We do have a presentation for this.
Um, so in a minute, Brenna's going to go over the main points of the proposed changes to the procedures. That we use to implement the district's farm program, but the journey to get here. Uh, and the current farm policy and the procedure spans about twenty years and many periodic updates, so. For some board members who may not be familiar, have familiar with the program, uh, we felt that with a little bit of background. On how we got here might be helpful to you. So prior to two thousand and one, uh, district land protection projects. Occasionally included some farmland, usually that was in conjunction with something else we were buying, like a street border or woods or a wetland. And these tended to be very small parcels, and within a few years, they were restored to habitat or became part of the public amenities of the site. And then in the nineteen nineties, when the um, when farmland and natural land really began to disappear. At a quick rate in the county, um, that concern translated into two successful bond referendums, one in two thousand and one. And one in two thousand and seven. And the referendums have required time period for spend down. And the spend down has to be on the thing that you asked for in the referendum. And a large chunk of that was for preserving open space and also for opening sites. So as a result, the district started assembling bigger sites. And that often included more significant farmland resources as part of the purchase. So some of those lands were retired from farming to allow the sites to be developed and accessed, some was restored to prairie. But there was more land coming in at that time than district staff resources, uh, or operational funds would allow us. Either restore or to open. So our current farm program was established in two thousand and six. To provide some procedures and some goals for the land that was going to remain in production for a longer period of time than a year or two. And that resulted, the current formula we have for rental, which is based on the. February average for December corn futures and all the other things that are part of our policy. So over time, since two thousand and six, there have been dramatic changes in in farm technology and production techniques. Uh, the district created a conservation hang program, and the counties continue to grow, although at a slower grow rate. And that put us in a situation in two thousand and fifteen where we actually assembled a committee. To take a look at the farm policy and procedures and recommend changes, because at that point, we had been into it for um almost a decade. And uh, that committee included staff, it included trustees, they included farm operators in our program, the Farm Bureau was part of it. And we had some representatives from the regenerative farm community, which was just beginning to become established in McHenry County at the time. And we worked for about four months, uh, and that committee presented changes to the board for the policy and procedures. And that was accepted by the board in two thousand and fifteen. Since then, there have been periodic changes in the lease language. Uh, and some procedures have been implemented, implemented on kind of an as-needed basis. And generally, that's in response to shifts and how um agriculture has happens, grant requirements that we sometimes. Run into, and a lot of times, issues that are brought forward by our operators. So staff has been working for about the last six months to kind of compile. All of the changes that have happened and all the changes we need um to implement. Uh, and we're going to present it to you tonight, and Brenna is going to do that.
He said, so hello everyone, my name is Brenna Nass, I'm the agricultural apologist for the district. And I'm just going to be providing a brief summary of uh the farm management program. And the proposed changes to the administrative procedures of the program. So the district has protected more than twenty-five thousand seven hundred acres of McHenry County, and currently six thousand five hundred and fifty acres are in agricultural production. The district works with about sixty different producers who lease this farmland, uh, which currently includes about five thousand acres grow crops. About five hundred acres of brass hay, and about four hundred acres of pasture for livestock. And the rest of the acres in the farm program are field borders, filter strips, and grass waterways that are managed as farm conservation areas. The farm management program uh seeks to demonstrate that ecologically managed farmland can be profitable and productive for the producer. While also improving the ecological health and function of the soils and other natural resources. And providing benefits to the citizens of McHenry County through open space and groundwater infiltration areas. Management of the district's farmland is guided by the farm management policy and administrative procedures. And the policy established five goals for the farm program, which are to protect and conserve natural resources. Build partnerships to be equitable, promote alternative agriculture, and support beginning and young farmers. And the administrative procedures, um, outline the practices implemented by the district to achieve these established goals. And as Ed mentioned, they were previously updated in two thousand and fifteen. Um, some of the components have become ineffective or inconsistent with the current requirements of the lease. Uh, so the proposed changes to the administrative procedures include updates. To the conservation agricultural requirements to reflect the current lease language. To establish standard procedures for responding to non-compliance issues. To establish new procedures aimed at reducing the occurrence of non-compliance in the future. By requiring preapproval from the district for an annual proposed pesticide plan. And to eliminate the requirement for lessees to work with NRCS to develop a conservation plan. Most of the conservation agricultural requirements, which constitute Exhibit B of the district's farm lease. Have been in the lease for a number of years at this point, but they haven't been incorporated into the procedures. Uh, these include establishment and maintenance of thirty-foot field borders and sixty-five-foot filter strips along waterways. Uh, the district does not allow fall tillage or fall nitrogen application, crop rotation is required, cover crops are required on heavily erodible land. And certain pesticides are restricted, and a new procedure that we are proposing is to require preapproval. Uh, from the district for a proposed pesticide plan or prop land that would be submitted uh prior to application of any pesticides. And staff feel that this will be advantageous to both the district and the lessees in reducing the occurrence of non-compliance. With regard to residual herbicide use. Um, so the current procedures also don't establish any standard response for non-compliance with the lease. So we want to establish standards for non-compliance. Uh, based on the last three years of monitoring, the issues typically fall into one of these eight categories. When I started with the district in two thousand and twenty-one, there was no consistent uh record or reporting of the inputs applied to district farmland. By the lessees of the farm lease program, so I've been spending the last three years improving the reporting rate to better track that information. Because it can and it has impacted our restoration planning and our ability to fulfill grant requirements. Resi- residual herbicide has been a big issue, um, however, I would say that's more so because of the technicality. Which I think we can avoid through early coordination and planning with our tenants. Next slide, please. Um, residual herbicides are commonly applied agricultural chemicals that offer extended weed control. However, some of the products on the market are persistent in the soil for three or more years, which. Extends beyond the last year of the lease uh when applied for most of our leases. So uh, these chemicals have impacted the district's prairie restorations, which cost on average about a thousand dollars per acre in seed. Um, next slide, please. This is an example of an herbicide label, which uh is easily uh found on on the internet. Typically includes a proper rotation table with the number of months that you should wait to plant certain crops after application. To minimize impact of determination of the subsequent crop. So our tenants would typically reference these tables for uh rotating to corn or soybeans. However, if we're planning to restore a site, we have to consider the any prop not listed interval at the bottom of the table typically. And that's sometimes much longer. Um, and our lease does state that no chemicals with carryover effect on brasses and broadly plants um beyond the lease are permitted. Uh, but we think the best way to ensure that the district and the lessee are on the same page is to establish the proposed pesticide plan. Prior to chemical application, uh, this is a standard practice as well for US Fish and Wildlife Service farm leases.
Do you have to have like a plan B in case weather doesn't permit application of?
Yeah, so it's not locking you in, it's um basically saying, you know what you're gonna. Yeah, so it's not locking you in. It's um, basically saying, you know what you're gonna, what prop you're gonna plant. Um, months in advance, right? And you know what tools are in your toolbox for weed management? So what are, what are your options for application? Let us know what you're considering or what you may need. And we'll let you know if those are okay.
Well, this is trusting that make that we can add questions at the front of your list there. So yeah, I understand.
I think. I think um, that had to do with converting it to to prairie. Grass, that was, that was the issue.
Right, but if you use three years down the road.
Yeah, but I guess, I think if you have no intention of, like, right out here, we have no intention of. Putting planting into grass or.
Yeah.
A restoration. Yeah, I mean, obviously the guy's gonna tell you what he's gonna use.
Right, that's all weird.
But I guess. You know, I'll challenge you, you're gonna tell him what he's gonna plant, what what chemicals he's gonna use.
Not necessarily. Well, what what I might say is. So if we know a parcel is going to continue to be farmed and they wanna apply, say, the dual pro. Which we have seen has a long residual uh, or carryover effect. But I don't expect that that will impact our plans.
Right, yeah.
Then I'm not gonna say you can't apply that. Um, but if we are thinking. We might take a piece out for retirement, then we wanna be more cautious about what's applied.
Yeah, and I understand, yeah, yeah.
So Pat, it probably isn't gonna affect most of our operations.
No, it's not gonna, right.
Other than.
Right. You could go one or two paces and then that blows up and, well, it was with the wrong people, yeah. That's, but no, I think that's, that's good.
Oh, okay, thank you. And then just one more slide, actually. Um, so the NRCS conservation plans. Are a requirement in our lease. They once served as a guidepost for implementing conservation practices into the farm program. And the leases and the procedures state that our tenants must complete one before beginning farming um, on our property. Today, I have found that most lessies aren't familiar with these conservation plans. They. Aren't aware that they need updated or followed and they don't know how to go about updating them. And so I also have met with NRCS staff about updating the conservation plans, uh, all of which are over. With the exception of a few are over ten years old at this point. And um, my conversations with NRCS basically revealed that. They are not able to update our conservation plans on our timeline. Um, they are not as high priority as. Plans for people who are enrolling in NRCS financial incentive programs. Uh, I would, I argue that our current leases are more detailed and restrictive than uh, NRCS conservation plans. And that that could be confusing to our tenants, um, and a burden for them to work through NRCS on these plans. That don't necessarily meet our lease standards, so. We're recommending that uh, compliance be based on the requirements of our lease rather than on a NRCS construction.
So you're gonna have to take that out of that lease requirement.
But but just, but if you're in the farm program, you gotta abide by, if you. You know, to get your, to get, if there's ever payments, you gotta abide by their rules, NRCS, not your rules.
That's if they're going to enroll in uh, CRP or equip on that ground.
I thought if, say, you know, like, you got low yields and the prices are low and you get a, you get, the government pays you. But you gotta be in compliance with their.
So NRCS conservation plans are not a legally binding document. Um, they're a requirement. For financial assistance.
See, that's between NRCS and FSA.
Right, exactly.
FSA, so.
They're, they're different entities. They do not have any little standing.
Um, I know what you're saying.
Yeah.
It can, but it doesn't, so, yeah.
It's very confusing to be honest. It took me a long time to figure out the difference.
Yeah.
And I think probably our tenants also struggled with it.
Good. So your other, the financial portions of it are gonna stay the same as far as how.
Yeah.
How that works. Uh, yeah, sometime I'd like you to explain it to me.
Oh.
I have people ask me a lot.
Oh, okay.
Well, how does that work? I have no.
You mean the rent?
Mm-hmm.
Correct. I, I have, I have another uh, to that.
Okay.
Alright, so if you gotta rotate, hey, you're, the rent is based off corn.
Yes.
Okay, right? When you're planting beans, you gross less money on beans.
Right.
Than you do on corn.
Right.
So, I, I mean, I'm not opening up a can of worms, but like I have some land, it's farm management. Managers and they're ruthless, but they take actual production. Times, you know, the price of corn. If you have corn, times a certain percentage and that's what you pay. And if you grow beans, it's your actual production times, you know, the price of beans at. Nearest elevated, times a certain percentage and that's what you're paying.
So, so staff has also looked at the complexities of of this and it was designed, I think. In an attempt to try to be equitable with the farm community. If it was a bad year, you were paying less rent, if it was a good year, you're paying more rent. Um, but in order to change that, that would require policy changes and what we're bringing you tonight is procedures.
No, no, I mean, I, not policy.
It would be slightly much easier.
And that's the way it's going.
If you didn't have to follow what you have now.
There's so many absentee landowners and they really don't have an idea clue of what, you know, what's going on.
Well, it's gotten complicated.
Yeah, it's, but I mean, I, obviously the farmer's gotta make money too. I mean, you know, that's what it's all about, so.
Yeah, I think this was a way to.
No.
You know, to. Make it a little bit more fair in terms of adjusting the price on a variable without even complicating it even more. Because if you are basing it on yield, you have to wait to the end of the year to get that yield, which means you're not getting your rent till the end of the year. Um, there's a lot more to calculate and take into consideration.
I'd say something else, but I'm not cutting about the rent because that. Like I said, farm managers are ruthless.
Well.
We were trying, shut up, we're trying not to be ruthless. I know, I know.
As far as I know, we are the only open space agency with farmland that does it this way.
I think that's.
I think that's, yeah.
Most of the time, it's uh, it it goes out to bid and.
Correct.
It's a set price.
And it's kind of a goodwill gesture, I mean, you know.
Uh, do we have anything to be able to, I, one of the criteria was to help young farmers start, that kinda thing. I know that's a big thing of the Farm Bureau's agenda.
Yes.
Is that, do we have anything to address that?
Uh, I'm hoping to meeting, continuing the conversation with the Farm Bureau. I was waiting to hear back from. Dan Volkers on his availability to meet about that.
Okay, but you are, you're aware of it and you work for that.
I am aware of it and I, I'm, I've also done some research into what other agencies are doing with regard to that. The Iowa DNR has a young and beginning farmer program where they allocate certain parcels. For uh, young or beginning farmers to bid on. Um, they have to be under a certain size. Other than that, I can't really figure out how they establish.
Yeah, I, I don't have an idea either. I just know that's one, that's a big, a pushing for, so.
Good.
And if there's, well, so it's a little bit of a double-edged sword because we don't have that much um. Roll over, that's not the right word. There's not that much opportunity to bid on ag land because we do negotiate. Says with the current tenants. Um, so there aren't that many parcels that come available.
Yeah, well, you can, I mean, if the tenant, we're not, the current tenant is doing a good job and you're satisfied. I mean, you gotta, you know.
So there's pros and cons.
You're renting a farm and, oh, I'm doing what they're saying and I'm paying my rent and all of a sudden it's like, oh, we're gonna. Find somebody or put it out for bids or we're gonna give it to, I mean, it's kinda like you say, it's a double-edged sword.
Right, exactly. There's pros and cons to both options and many other counties rebid every cycle.
Right, and that would increase, alright, you know, revenue at one side.
You get a lot of pissed off.
Yeah.
You gotta deal with them.
The system we have helps to reduce the volatility for the operator.
Sure.
Because they know, alright, I'm in a three-year lease, if I'm following the rules and we go to negotiation, if everything is reasonable. I can probably depend on continuing to farm.
Yeah.
And I think that's one of the most popular parts of the program.
Yeah, it, it builds consistency and I think it becomes more of a partnership because you do establish a relationship.
Yeah, but the other side of the picture is that, well, you got a certain amount of people in the baby and they're, I heard that too. And so you got issues that, yeah.
And I think that's why um, the standards for compliance are important because you need some um. You know, standard to uphold and a way to enforce.
The reason why.
Do you terminate the lease with sixty days, they have sixty days to remediate? If they don't follow the rules, if they don't, the lease is broken and there could be damages.
Um, in terms of non-compliance, so to my knowledge, we haven't implemented that, uh, it's.
But then it's for the new policy.
The new procedure has a process to which to, right, yeah, we have.
Well, cause you had to put a little teeth to it.
Yeah, oh yeah, no, no, I, I.
Exactly.
I thought I saw somewhere in the old one, it was like three strikes, you're out. And this says, if you're not in compliance, you're not, don't get it rectified with a six-day gap to be notified. Since you, you could be.
So that was the original language, sixty days, which as I discussed tonight. There are issues that cannot be rectified within sixty days, which is why. Um, we needed to establish a tiered system, so we do um, have that proposed. As options then to address the issue, uh, whether it's, you know, a notice. Of the non-compliance and it's resolved, um, then they're, you know, they're compliant and they're good. Um, and if they do not resolve the issue, we can't, we have the option to cancel the lease at the end of the year. Or restrict and or restrict them from bidding on farm parcels for up to five years. If we have a recurring compliance.
Well, yeah, you gotta have some peace.
Right.
Any questions on that, anything else? Good. I think you're progressing along good. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, thanks, sir.
Okay, John's up next for the last family.
Yeah. You don't expect this to take long, I'm not even gonna pull a chair up there. I, I think the last time we talked about this, Pat said something like, haven't we talked about this in the past? And my answer was, I think we owe, we owe the board a more comprehensive look at it. So what we did was we looked at it not just from the standpoint of, you know, does the building need a generator, not just a generator. We looked at, or what is the electrical impact of it, or we looked at it from the natural resources impact. We looked at, can we keep staff functioning out of there, because there was a uh, computer server open, everybody got power up. Can we withstand and how, how did we withstand the last, you know, power rise? How many, how, how are ours have they been in the last twenty years? You know, so we looked at it holistically. And when you take a look at that and you measure that upon the negative impact on natural resources there. Uh, that oak specifically will, I mean, Ed believes wholeheartedly will kill oaks, I think he's right. Um, you know, and so when you look at it from that perspective, all the different perspectives, we looked at it. The staff is confident we can keep people operating, uh, on team working from home. Uh, in a power outage. Uh, the other thing we're confident about is we can withstand a forty-power outage pretty easily up there. Just by a few preventative measures.
Um, you have a plan then.
Yeah, we have a plan in place. Doesn't, uh, the return on investment is spending a hundred and twenty thousand dollars or whatever. But to get ready for a generator is just, it's bad. And so therefore, we are recommending, we just. Can that, um, and 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 not certainly talk about it while the cat's still.
Hey, when I read that, man, that made my day.
That was one of the first things when I got out of that.
We, I was glad that, and that's what we're doing. So we're glad, we'll, we'll figure it out, we'll sure up.
Yeah, as long as you got a plan, then as long as the building's not gonna, you know.
So really cool thing about what came out of this was a plan. That was, I, of all of this is, you know, what do we do in the event of? And we came up with like, we knew what we could do and how we could, and the most important thing was. Uh, Larry Nichols, our building uh, maintenance supervisor said, look, when we, we'll go shut the water down, bring back what we can bring back. And when we start the water back up, we'll put people all over that building. And we'll turn it on slowly. If anybody hears a leak, we'll shut it off, go take care of that. And that then minimizes the damage. Maybe it's a little puddle of water here, you got a mouthbup or something like that and some, and a little bit, you know, drywall fix or something. But um, but I think that was one of the best things that came out. So again, our recommendation is let fly or if we're good, we can just get by.
Okay, please, I think I'll think fairly bad. Thank you. Hey, Elizabeth, you're up.
Okay, few, few updates. Um, last week, we did send uh, our comments on to the county. On their comprehensive twenty fifty plan and um, again, a great, a great read to look at where the vision is going. I know they'll be continuing to have conversations before that's finalized and uh, the focus of clearly our water. Um, outdoor open spaces, agriculture, big push, you know, for McHenry County's character here as well. How they're addressing transportation and trails, um, which were connected too. So again, a good read and we'll look forward to see how that's going forward. And then of course, offering our pledge to connect with them and feature planning initiatives as we always do hand in hand. So I thought that was great. We are meeting uh, with the county on Monday morning, President Don, Vice President Everard, myself and Director Diallo. Um, about the proposition and so we have our meetings all scheduled. Um, what I gave you the scene, we did update um, the um, just our messaging a little bit based to clarify. Uh, we did have our foundation meeting this week and presented in more detail those questions, kinda led to some more clarity. That we wanted to make sure that was, was in this and so um, keeping uh, more so on the specifics. Connecting the reduction, it's a forty-five percent reduction, um, that will be guaranteed with the passage of the proposition. And then the specifics of the, you know, the amount of, of what it would mean, which would be for a three hundred thousand dollar home's value. That amount um, would be a savings of nine, eighty-four dollars of decrease in their property taxes with the passage of the, the proposition. So that is there, uh, and so just be familiar with that. We are continuing with staff. And to make sure that everybody's very comfortable as well as volunteers.
Suggestion, forty-five percent.
Yeah, to, to make sure that that's solid and uh, and then we'll go from there, uh, stay in contact with Trust for Public Land. Um, let's see, we were down in Springfield uh, last week. Uh, Gabe did join me for the card stay at the Capitol. And we made connections, you probably saw in the wiki while, the photographs that we had with the legislators that we took photographs, talked with. Some we had to catch as they were running from committee meeting or onto the floor, but we did get an opportunity to speak with them. We were able to provide them information about the proposition and then invite follow-up, um, which I'm working on to, to spend some more additional time with them. So, so all positive, uh, and uh, it's a great time and would encourage uh, more members in the future. Um, whether locally here, when we meet with them in their offices or down in Springfield to, to take that, take that opportunity. Um, one of the big things that during the um, legislative conference that they did talk about, once again, the governor's budget. Um, there'll be a journey at the end of the month. We'll tell, the budget's still, it needs to be addressed, so we'll see if they go into overtime or not. Um, the Open Space Land Acquisition Development Program, which is funded by the real estate transfer tax. Um, there is a proposal on the governor's budget to sweep twenty-five million dollars for one year only. Um, out of that, and so a lot of legislators, to talk to our, our legislators to say that's not acceptable, that the money was for its direct purpose. It goes to parks, we match that to the one who needs to stay, you know, um, and needs to stay where it's at and uh, and not have that happen. So a lot of work going on that. We also, they had someone there to speak about um, the elections. Saying that there's gonna be a lot of traffic, as we know, coming into the general election and election securities. And the issues that the state had been years ago, but obviously, anything to suppress voters and to not get voters out. With a lot of fake information on the internet and media and trying to, you know, say that polls closed at three o'clock. When that's not true or whatever that's out there just to, to kinda skew an election. So they gave a lot of time on that. They also then, uh, the public access counselor and always with the Freedom of Information Act. A lot of pack opinions on how responses are being handled. We've seen a recent, uh, in just the last several weeks, several FOIA's picking back up. Um, I think we've done a great job in most of our cases of putting a lot of our information out on our transparency portal. Which then provides easy access for anybody. which then provides easy access for anybody to pull that information, but we are getting some specifics. We had one on the number of farmlands acres, you know, just the various things that, that, that come up. So again, we are responding to all of that, and thank goodness we've not had an issue with compliance with the PAC officer. And with that, next week, next Tuesday, you should have received an invitation. We are doing an open house with Wendy Cooper. As you know, she will be retiring and we'll recognize her on Tuesday evening. Her last day will be June fourth. And a reception from two to five, so if you'd stop by, closer to the board meeting, whatever, we'll have some, some refreshments here for that. And then lastly, two trustees next Tuesday. They did interview their trustees, there were seven trustees, not all interviewed, but they ended up selecting two, and those are being advanced forward. Mike Zurich and then Bonnie Leydie to the Board of Trustees. And so they will officially start with us in July. And then, of course, we have trustee Britson, trustee Thomas's last meeting in June. Time flies.
Time flies. What do you want?
We'll roast and toast you then in, in June. You don't get, you don't get to go without a toast and a roast. And, and again, that's, that's all I've got. Any questions?
I don't do anything. Did you want to point out that I didn't look through it until just recently, the April Parks and Recreation that you, or featured in one of the articles? Page sixteen. I must have looked at that.
And the Find Your Wild is in the May issue, right? So the next issue about that program, so. And then we'll have, we have some special announcements too, not to take the hype, but we have two announcements. Also, there'll be next Tuesday night for awards for the district, so you'll see that.
All right, public comments, number two.
Don't raise hands.
Don't raise hands, thank you. Motion for adjournment. And that we adjourned this week. So, removed in second.
Okay, sorry, let me hear, I gotta do trustee stuff, okay. All right, let's do roll call. Trustee Zimmerman.
Yes.
Vice President Everard.
Yes.
Trustee Thomas is absent, trustee White Zurich.
Yes.
But treasure game.
Yes. Yes.
President Don.
Yes. For adjourn.